Good evening. This is the Design Review Commission Agenda for Monday, April 24th. The meeting will be called to get to order and it is now 6:30. Commissioner Saleh, will you do our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kirk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Romo. Vice Chair Saleh.
Here.
Commissioner Too.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on Cable Channel 3 and on our online platforms. To prevent any overlaps in comments, each Commissioner will be called upon to speak. First item, public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the publics to address the Design Review Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Persuaded to the Brown Act, the Design Review Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear on as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to speak and address the Design Review Commission, please fill out a speaker card that is available on the back of the table. Once completed, kindly submit the card to the recording secretary. Speakers will be called upon to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Any comments, I mean any cards?
No, Madam Chair.
We will go on to item number two, consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the Design Review Commission or public request a separate discussion. Commissioner Too, do you have any items that you would like to pull from the consent calendar?
No, I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I do not, thank you.
Vice Chair Saleh?
No, I do not, thank you.
Have you received any items to pull?
No, Madam Chair.
Then I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roco?
Chair Romo.
Yes.
Vice Chair Saleh.
Yes.
Commissioner Too.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Agenda item number three is public hearing. And good evening, thank you for participating and tuning into tonight's Design Review Commission meeting. My name is Samantha T. Watzart, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. There are three public hearing items this evening and the item on the agenda, sorry, copies of the agenda and the staff report for tonight's hearing are available on the city's website and that's at www.sangabrocity.com and also on the table that is by the entrance. If you wish to speak on an item this evening and are not the project applicant, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording secretary, which is Beverly, this evening. Speaker cards are also available at the back table. Please write down the item number that you would like to speak on and speakers will be called up one by one to the podium during the public hearing portion of each item. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak and any decision made by the Design Review Commission this evening is appealable to the City Council. The deadline for filing an appeal application concerning a decision made tonight will be Monday, May 8th. Otherwise, any decision made this evening will be effective on Tuesday, May 9th. And if you wish to appeal an application, please contact the project planner for the application and fee. For each item this evening, staff will provide a summary of the staff report followed by a presentation from the applicant. If there is a presentation, then the public hearing will be open and after the public comments, the applicant is provided the opportunity to rebut if they choose. And prior to the close of the public hearing, the commission may ask questions of the applicant, staff, or the city architect. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. And with that, Madam Chair, at this time, staff is ready to present item A.
Thank you. Item A is 1-803 Charlotte Avenue, planning case number SPR 20012. Site plan review, applicant is Eric Singh. Presentation will be made by Associate Planner Anthony Alvarado.
Test, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The first item before you tonight is for a site plan review to propose a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence located at the address 1803 South Charlotte Avenue, planning case number SPR 20-012. This item was originally scheduled for the March DRC meeting but was continued to a future date due to a lack of quorum. The project site is located on the west side of South Charlotte Avenue between Valley Boulevard to the north and East Marshall Street to the south. The subject property is highlighted with a red box on the west side of Charlotte Avenue. The 11,700 square foot lot is currently developed with a 1,196 square foot, one-story, single-family residence with a detached two-car garage. The property is currently neibored by four other single-family homes, both to the north, south, and west of the subject property and across the street of Charlotte. Staff just wanted to also address that South Charlotte on the east side does not belong to the city of San Gabriel, that is county. This is just a picture of the existing house from the street level. The property is zoned R1 for single-family residential and has a general land use designation of low-density residential. This image is a screenshot of the proposed site plan for the project with an addition to the front house, a new second-story addition, and a new detached or attached garage to the rear of the property. There is a proposal for an ADU and a junior ADU for this project, however, due to the California State law, those are not a part of the decision tonight as they are to be reviewed ministerially. This is a street perspective of the proposed project, let's see, as it resides between the two adjacent properties. The table on this slide shows that the proposed project complies with the San Gabriel Municipal Code guidelines. The Municipal Code requires either that the height of the dwelling unit fall within the angled plane of 45 degrees drawn from a point 10 feet above the side property lines or maintain minimum side setbacks for the second story of 10 feet. Currently, the second floor along the western property line, oh, I'm sorry, along the northern property line is 14 feet while the southern property line is at 10 feet, which would meet the requirements. As part of the application, the applicant is required to provide a study that was included as attachment E in your packets tonight to show how many single-family zone or single-family properties have a two-story residence on them. That survey or analysis shows that there is 18 of those properties within the vicinity. As mentioned earlier, this land use designation for this site is low-density residential, which would allow for the proposed project. The proposed project was also found to be in line with the following of housing goal A, community design goal 10.1, and community design goal 10.3. This project was reviewed under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, and found to be exempt per guideline sections 15303, Class 3, for new construction or conversion of small structures. And noticing was required for this project. As mentioned earlier, this was originally scheduled for the March DRC meeting and it was continued to a date certain, which was today, but staff did notice it the same way as we would for it coming for the first time. We sent out notices to property owners within the 300-foot radius. A notice was posted at the subject site as well as in the issue of the San Gabriel Sun and also having the agenda posted in front of City Hall, the post office, library, and on our city website. And as with that, that staff recommends that the Design Review Commission adopt a resolution of the Design Review Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number SPR 20-012 for a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence at 1803 South Charlotte Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This is going to conclude staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions and I believe, yeah, we also have the project architect and applicant here as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. I'd like to call on each Commissioner to see if they have terrifying questions for staff. Commissioner Too?
No, I don't have questions for staff, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Vice Chair Saleh?
No questions for staff, thank you.
I don't have any questions for staff at this time.
Thank you.
We now have the applicant. This is the time for the applicant to address the commission.
Hi. Good evening, member of the Design Review Committee. My name is Eric Singh, I'm the project architect for this project. As the planner already presented the project, I'll focus on the architectural design part of this project. So, the addition of the proposed project are completely located behind the existing single-family house on the lot. That includes the second-floor addition. It does not overlap on the existing one-story house footprint. And also, the existing Spanish architectural style will be preserved with some additional architectural elements to be added. So, most of the Spanish architectural elements are visible from the streetscape. First, the wooden columns, as you can see on the color illustration and also on the elevations. We have the wooden columns and beams that are proposed for the porch and the balcony. And also, there's a bell-shaped window at the bedroom that serves as a unique Spanish design element. Other architectural elements, including the use of born-in-band shutters, the terracotta style roof tile, and the use of white stucco are consistent also with the overall design. In conclusion, I think the proposed second-floor addition will enhance the existing architectural design of the house and also make the neighborhood more attractive. That concludes my presentation and thank you for your consideration of this project and I'll be around for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask the Commissioners if they have any terrifying questions for the project applicant. We have the architect Eric Singh representing the applicant. Commissioner Too?
Yes, I do have a question on the drawing, page A-1.
Yeah.
And there's a drawing illustrated like elevation on the right-hand side and I don't understand where that elevation stands for, like which elevation is that?
The street elevation you're referring to in the middle?
Yeah, the one in the middle between the forefront and the color illustration.
That's the two neighbors on both sides.
Oh, that's the two neighbors?
Yeah, the two neighbors.
Okay.
And one of the neighbor towards the north side is pretty far away from this subject house, so it's, yeah, it shows, I'll show the sort of distance, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Your turn.
I don't have other questions.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Saleh?
Yeah, I do have a question. Can we look at the existing front elevation of the property in the photographs? Yeah, perfect, thank you. So, I apologize if I missed it, but I did not see anywhere where the front fence is defined. There was one call-out for a new maximum 48-inch high laster, but there isn't much description about the fencing itself and I was wondering what is being proposed for the front yard fencing? Let me see. The note I found was on the landscape plan.
On the landscape plan, okay. Yeah, so we have total of five pilasters in the front setback area. And we have a swing driveway gate, double swing gate for the driveway and also a pedestrian gate to the walkway facing the, I mean, leading to the front door of the house. And it's going to be wrought iron fencing.
Okay, I just want to confirm that it's going to be consistent with the wrought iron that's being introduced to the front elevation of the property?
Yes, so it is planned to have the same wrought iron fencing that we have proposed for the porch on the front elevation.
Understood.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Saleh, that was also one of my points that I was going to bring up tonight. One thing I wanted just to make clear, you can go to the rendering, Anthony. The rendering that's shown here shows three large trees in the backyard, two of the trees, the trees that we see on the right side, kind of behind the driveway and center of the house. Those two trees looks like they're existing, but they're going to be removed as shown in the landscape plan. There will be a new tree kind of off behind on the left side of the rendering. But since you're adding two trees, one in the front yard and one in the back, what I'd like to see is if there could be some type of vine on the rear patio that's being built so there's some greenery because on that driveway side, there's no greenery kind of that lifts your eye as you're walking by. My other point is that I'm aware that there's no requirement to put sidewalk in front of this house, but I do think that it is important that either to provide sidewalk or some type of pavers beyond that front entry and looking at the plant material. So, according to your landscape plan, the ground cover that's shown here grows two to one feet tall and that's not a suitable walking surface. So, I'd like you to, if you're not doing a sidewalk, then looking at some type of lower plant material such as micro clover or silver carpet, something that's drought tolerant and low to the ground with pavers. And not only at that leads up to the gate, but assuming you're going to have vehicles parking in front of the house, the people getting out of the car will need to walk and sometimes the drought-tolerant material, if it's the plant material, if they're not selected appropriately, it presents a tripping hazard and something that's not walkable.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for the suggestion on the plant selection and we can definitely look into other type of ground cover in that area, but we do have a walkway leading from the driveway to the front door.
Yes.
So, they don't necessarily need to walk on the landscaping to get to the front door.
Right.
Yeah, and...
What I'm saying is to the north and south of those pavers have additional pavers because if you park either to the north or south of that and get out of the car on the passenger side, you're going to have plant material there. And if that plant material is what is shown on your landscape plan, then it's a potential trip hazard.
Okay. Well, the driveway is actually 18 feet wide, so if there's only one car parking at that driveway, there's plenty of room for them to walk.
I think I'm referring to guest parking.
The guest parking?
Yes, or if someone who owns the house, if they decide to park on the street or if a guest or if a neighbor decides to park in front of the house, gets out of the car.
So, you're referring to the right-of-way?
Right.
The street, okay.
That parkway area.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's something that we need to talk to Public Works, maybe?
So, what I'm suggesting, Public Works is not going to make you do a sidewalk.
Okay.
So, what I am recommending, if the other Commissioners agree, is to put additional pavers along with other low-plant material. So, the pavers aren't going to cost as much as doing sidewalk.
Okay, I'm okay with that, yeah.
But it will be an amenity for the neighbors and for the residents, especially as guests come over and step out from into that parkway area.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that idea.
Those are my basic points. I do think that the building has been well-designed.
Thank you.
And there's some nice balance. Before we go to a vote, I would like to hear from our city architect.
Thank you, Eric. I think he has done a very good job. In his first submittal, I just had very few suggestions on how to tie things together and he accepted them well and he's done a very good job.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the general public on this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one. It is from Elizabeth R. and it states as follows. "This letter is in response to the project proposal for the property located at 1803 South Charlotte Avenue, San Gabriel, California, 91776. Proposed addition of a second story to the existing single-family structure at the aforementioned address. The following is a list of concerns that affect the property owners located at 1809 South Charlotte Avenue, immediately adjacent to 1803. Number one, noise magnification and nuisance due to close proximity of structures which becomes confined between the two dwellings. Number two, privacy concerns, bathroom and bedroom windows face north directly opposite and aligned with 1803. Presently, as a single-story, there exists a privacy hedge which minimally helps, however, adding a second story would mitigate this factor altogether. If at any time in the future the property at E219 comes up for resale, it may affect a potential buyer's interest in the property, therefore diminishing the value of the home or making it harder to sell due to privacy and noise constraints. We ask that the Planning Commissioner, Design Committee, and Project Planner, please consider these objections, factors with their concerns for everyday quality of life, living standards, and future hindrances and limitations associated with this project. We have already experienced some of the above-mentioned issues with other properties in close proximity to us caused by addition of a second story and this current project will amplify these issues even further. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, homeowner, 1809 South Charlotte Avenue." Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to address the landscaping on that side of the property on the north side?
Yes. So, let's go back to the common. We do have a row of landscaping, a screening hatch from the front property line all the way to the back property line along the driveway. So, but you're suggesting to add some vine plantings to the carport in the back, is that?
Do you know the height of those items?
It is 15.
Because one is the dwarf bottle brush, so that one is going to be a low bush.
Yeah, it's actually 15-gallon wax leaf privet. So, to my understanding, that actually grows like eight feet tall.
Eight feet tall.
But, yeah.
Is that correct? Does staff know about that? Okay, I'm going to look it up.
Okay.
It looks like it is a hedge and depending on how tall you want it, it can for a dollar. I think that it's important for privacy issues to have as much along that north side as possible because that's the property that's closest. There is no hedge though along the side where the building is itself. And the resident was concerned about privacy with windows.
So, we do have a four-foot-wide walkway on the south side. I think we can reduce that to three feet and propose the same type of hatches along the south property line. That would create a green wall to provide additional privacy to the neighbor.
Are there any Commissioner comments regarding the concern for the resident?
Can you just clarify what you just said? What is it you're going to put, are you going to...
So, the neighbor that is concerned is on the south side of this property and because there is limited space where the house is proposed, we do not have, currently, we do not have any hatches proposed on the landscape plan, but if we make the walkway three feet instead of what we proposed at four feet, then we have additional foot... then we have additional foot to the landscaping area. That way, we can propose the same type of hedge that we have proposed for the north side, which it can grow up to eight feet to provide more privacy to the south side neighbor.
Thank you for clarifying that. And one other question now. Part of the homeowner's concern was also that the AC units are there and they're concerned about noise nuisance? Is that part of their concern?
Yeah, the AC, we can move it to the back of the garage. So maybe the north corner of the new garage that is further away from the neighbor.
Thank you.
I do think that's pretty clever to have the addition beyond the original footprint of the existing house. But I just had, I'm curious, and also had a question for the city architect. Because we have a junior ADU in the front. And is there any code or regulation required? The main house will have a main entrance facing to the street?
I don't think there's any regulation like that. It says for an ADU, you should have a front door that is in the same position as the main house front door, but they don't have the opposite provision. And I noticed that too, that it doesn't really have a front door. It has a back door.
Right.
But I don't think there's a requirement to have truly a front door.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, it is now seven oh one. And it is time for the public comment on this item to close. Staff, is there any comments, additional comments from staff?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's no additional comments. However, does the commission need staff to summarize any of the comments provided by the commission?
Okay. Just to summarize some of the items that were discussed. So the first was mentioned regarding the front gate or the front fence to make sure that the material matches the other wrought iron work on the front of the elevation. There was a comment regarding the two trees shown on the rendering. And just to make sure that that is consistent with all the plans throughout, whether it's going to be to remove the trees or replant any other trees. There was a comment on adding a vine on the rear patio in the back. There was a comment regarding the, it's not a sidewalk in the front, but it would be to look to incorporate a low plant material, ground cover material, as well as pavers along the public right of way. And the other two items were to address the concern from the neighbor from the south, which was basically due to the recommendations from the applicant to incorporate the same hedges that are going to be used along the northern property line, to use those same hedges along the southern property line, and also to relocate the AC to the back, which would be away from the neighbor and would help alleviate any noise concerns.
Great, those are the ones I have listed.
Okay, thank you.
With that, do you have any rebuttal? Are you okay with those?
Yes, I'm okay with those and comments and suggestions.
Great, thank you. So right now, it's time for the commission to deliberate and discuss the item. Commissioner Two?
I think the project is well-designed. And I think I'm ready to approve it if the condition stays above. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
The only thing I would add is if we can get some sort of clarification as to the pavers in the front, to what kind of coverage are we looking at? Are we looking at just covering one foot from the sidewalk, from the curb? As to two feet or three feet from the curb? Kind of so that the developer knows how many pavers or what portion they are to cover.
Does staff have any recommendation on the paving, the pavers?
If the commission is okay with it, that could be something that we add as a condition of approval that staff will work with the city architect on. Or, I mean, for something like that, I don't.
You also have the landscape architect.
We do, yeah. And I could definitely run it by our city landscape architect as well. But I don't know how wide that walkway is. I'm just kind of looking at the picture above. I think three feet would possibly work, but I don't know how that would look aesthetically. So, yeah, that's something that we could work with our city landscape architect to incorporate that.
Are you okay with that?
I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Salo?
No further comments, ready to proceed. Yes, this is Vice Chair Salo. I concur with staff recommendation to approve this project. So I motion to approve planning case number SPR twenty dash zero one two.
Is there a second?
I second.
Roll call?
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Commissioner Two?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. We now go to our next project, four one seven Hermosa Road, planning case number PPD two two dash zero zero five, precise plan of design. Applicant is Michael Morcos. We have Marlon Cervantes doing our presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair and members of the Design Review Commission. The public hearing item before you tonight is for a precise plan of design to allow for the construction of five new accessory structures at the San Gabriel Country Club, located at four seventeen East Hermosa Drive, planning case number PPD twenty two dash zero zero five. The proposed project was continued from the March twenty seven, twenty twenty three, meeting due to a lack of a quorum. The San Gabriel Country Club is comprised of six separate properties totaling approximately one hundred and six acres. The subject property measures approximately thirty point five acres and is bound by Hermosa Drive to the, excuse me, to the south, California Street to the east, Country Club Drive to the west, and additional Country Club property to the north, as can be seen on the aerial map on the screen. The project itself is located at the southeast corner of the subject property. The site is primarily used for a portion of the golf course. The project area serves as an existing maintenance facility for the Country Club. And you can see it there on the lower right-hand corner of that red rectangle. The project site, along with surrounding properties, is zoned R one CC, or single-family residence, Country Club. The zone was established by ordinance in nineteen ninety-eight to protect large lots surrounding the San Gabriel Country Club from being subdivided into smaller parcels in order to preserve the unique character inherent in the neighborhood. Prior to the zone change, the Country Club and surrounding residential properties were zoned R one. The adoption of the R one CC zone established a new minimum lot width and site area of a hundred feet, excuse me, a hundred feet and fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet of minimum lot area, respectively. The ordinance did not establish any additional development standards. So for the purpose of this proposal, the project was reviewed for conformance with development standards in the R one zone. The proposed project involves the demolition of two maintenance buildings and material bins and the remodeling of an existing building. Existing building one, shown here, measures twenty four hundred square feet and will be remodeled and used for staff break room, meeting rooms, lockers, and storage. Building two measures eighteen hundred square feet and is currently used for mechanic bays, but will be demolished. Building three measures approximately eight hundred square feet and is used for small tools and mechanic storage and will also be demolished. The material bins shown here will be removed and replaced at a different location. The city's architectural historian reviewed the proposed project and found that the San Gabriel Country Club retains a high degree of integrity and appears eligible for local designation under the theme "Early Civic and Institutional Development in San Gabriel between eighteen forty nine and nineteen twelve", as well as the adjacent bridge and Rubio Wash Channel. With regards to the proposed project, however, the architectural historian determined that the modification was for a small area, a relatively minor importance, developed later in the Country Club's history, with lightweight utilitarian buildings of vernacular design with unlikely potential for significant impacts to the Country Club. The architectural historian notes that the property was owned for over a hundred years by the San Gabriel Mission, when thousands of trees were planted in the area along with five hundred acres of thick cactus hedge, and that remnant cactus hedge and two hundred-year-old oaks and other mature trees are reportedly in and around the Country Club. While the project does not propose to remove any trees, the city architectural historian recommends an added condition to identify and protect any mature trees and cactus hedge during construction if present. Additionally, due to the sensitivity for buried archaeological resources, a condition requiring the project applicant to comply with Section one fifty-three, six thirty F of the municipal code for onsite monitoring and mitigation has been added. This includes the requirement for a qualified archaeologist service to be contacted, or, excuse me, a qualified archaeologist service contact to be provided at the time of building permit issuance. In addition, in addition to the remodeling of existing building one, the project also includes the construction of five new accessory structures, as shown on the site plan here. The existing thirty-foot-wide driveway gate along East Hermosa Drive will be removed, and a new gate will be installed approximately eight and a half feet west of the existing location. The replacement rolling gate will be twenty feet wide and feature wrought iron frame and chain link with green slats to match the existing perimeter fence. The size of the buildings ranges from two hundred and forty square feet to two thousand two hundred and forty square feet and will feature mechanic bays, garage parking for lawn mowers, storage for supplies and equipment, and parking for electric golf carts. Each of the new buildings will be constructed of corrugated metal and painted an evergreen color with flat roofs, as can be seen here. This is an example of building two, the elevations. However, all of the buildings will match in material and color. I do have a material board that I can pass around as well. Building one, which is existing, will be remodeled, including the replacement of garage doors with anodized aluminum building doors with clear glass panes. The windows will also be replaced to match the new garage doors. As previously stated, the project was reviewed for conformance with the development standards in the R one zone, as shown on the development standards table here. The project meets or exceeds the zoning code with regard to lot coverage, floor area ratio, building height, and its setbacks. The proposed project has gone through several rounds of review with city staff and the city architect. The city architect notes that the proposed buildings are primarily utilitarian in function, have no real designer style, and are mostly screened by a dense vine hedge. In reviewing the project for compatibility and consistency, the goal was to orient the buildings in a manner that would limit visibility from public view. To reduce visibility of the structures, the driveway gate is being reduced to twenty feet in width and relocated further west away from the proposed structures. Additionally, the new buildings are located in a cluster further east away from the gate opening. The new buildings will also be painted green to blend in with the existing perimeter hedge and fence. The project applicant also proposes to reinforce the hedge areas where screening may be minimal in order to further limit views into the maintenance yard. The general plan land use designation for the property is open space and public facilities. This designation lists private golf courses, parks, and open space among its list of allowable uses. The project is also consistent with community facilities goal six point one one, requiring privately-held community facilities to develop in an orderly manner reflective of the community standards. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per guidelines, Section one five three zero three, class three, for new construction. The item was noticed at the project site, advertised in the April thirteenth, twenty twenty three, edition of the San Gabriel Sun, and notice was sent to all property owners and tenants within a five hundred-foot radius. This was done for the previous hearing scheduled for March, as well as this hearing tonight. Tonight's agenda was also posted at City Hall, the post office, and the public library. Finally, staff recommends that the Design Review Commission adopt a resolution of the Design Review Commission of the City of San Gabriel approving planning case number PPD twenty two dash zero zero five for a precise plan of design for five new maintenance yard accessory structures at the San Gabriel Country Club located at four seventeen East Hermosa Drive, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available for any questions.
Before we go to the applicant, I'd like to see if any commissioners have any questions for staff. Commissioner Two?
No, I don't have a question for staff, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I do, I have one question. In the building number four, it says, um, storage for chemicals and fertilizer and things of that sort.
Okay.
Just the only thing that caught my eye is chemicals and fertilizer. And do these pose any sort of hazard as to, not only the environment, but what sort of chemicals are they explosive, non-explosive? Or is that regulated somehow?
I believe there are regulations to that. But I think the applicant may be more qualified to answer that question.
And then. So as far as the protection for the trees and the cactus hedge, that recommendation has not been incorporated into the requirement, correct? Or is that something that we would advocate for requiring?
I thought it was listed in the conditions of approval, the recommended conditions of approval. If it's not in there, I can certainly add it.
Well, it says recommends, that doesn't necessarily mean it's a requirement.
Right, that was recommended by staff for the Design Review Commission to ultimately decide whether they wanted to include.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Vice Chair Salo?
No further questions for staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ron?
Thank you, Chair. Just one point, the material bins, as they're located today, I think you can see into the gate and you can see them. We asked them to move it further to the west so it's more screened, and they've done that. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. It is now time for the applicant to come forward.
Good evening. Excuse me, my mic. Madam Chair, member of the board. My name is Michael Morcos, I'm the designer of the project. Thank you for the staff, they did a very good job and a lot of efforts with us. As Marlon mentioned, that we are knocking down or. As Marlon mentioned, that we are knocking down or demolishing of two existing buildings, existing, um, which is steel structure. And the existing building which will remain, it's built of a block wall and will remain, will be remodeled interiorly for the staff break, lockers, restrooms, and administration for a couple of offices. And you are proposing six new buildings. All of them are made of steel structure, as Marlon mentioned that and explained it. So we did, we did our best to have this one colored with the same greenish color to blend with the surrounding of the nature and the landscape of this area. On the east side of the property, there is a channel, flood channel. And on the south, it's Hermosa. And on the northwest, it's the rest of the property of the golf course. I'm open for any questions would you like to add. Thank you.
So at this time, uh... Okay, sorry. Clarifying question for the project applicant. Thank you. Commissioner Tu?
Yes, I have a question. So, um, I see the, one of the existing building is like a CMU block wall. And the other one is the corrugated metal panel that to be demolished. So is the proposal has all the buildings that would be using corrugated metal panel?
Yes, all the new ones, but the existing one which is made, built of a block wall, that is the one will be stayed and will be remodeled.
So the block wall one will be maintaining the existing elevation?
Yes, it will be with some changes of, like, for instance, the doors right now, the garage doors, the car doors, is like, um, basic rooftop walls, I'm sorry, rooftop doors. That will be windows as it's shown on the elevation, which is the north elevation. That will be, uh, like storefront, aluminum anodized storefront. And the door itself, the door as well, I'm sorry.
Okay. Would that be any color?
Actually, that, it's an existing, but it will be, will cover, it will be covered with the stucco, sand finish stucco, like a tan color stucco.
Okay, the rest of the building, the rest, four of the buildings are like the green corrugated metal panel?
Yes.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tu. Commissioner Lopez?
I would just, um, see some further clarification about the chemicals and the, um, if the building you're proposing, the corrugated metal would comply with that type of storage of fertilizer and chemicals? And who we would be working with as far as compliance?
Yeah, the fertilizer, fertilizer is just for the, for the, you know, it's, it's for the, for the landscape. It's not something, you know, out of extraordinary. And the chemicals also, it's not like a chemicals word by meaning of chemicals, but it's a chemicals material, but it's used for the maintenance of the landscape.
So you mean it was like pesticides and?
Yeah, and the...
Manure and things like that?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Lopez?
No, thank you so much.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the existing masonry block wall, I think you just mentioned that the wall is going to be plastered and painted beige-tan color. Is that correct?
Yeah, an earlstone car, er, tonia.
So on the new proposed buildings that are also CMU block wall, the note here says that it's an integrated color to match. So I want to confirm that the new block wall buildings are also going to be plastered and painted?
The, the block wall is existing. There is no new block walls.
Okay.
Yeah, the existing is the one block wall. All the new is steel structure with the corrugated sheets.
Okay, understood. So all of the masonry block walls are going to be plastered and painted the beige-tan color that's on the material board?
It's one building only, yeah.
Okay. I also noticed that, um, you're showing the evergreen color for the corrugated metal panel siding. What is the color of the roll-up doors for the garage bay?
Be the same.
It's going to be the same, so it's going to match? Okay, so, because those are usually factory painted, powder coated by the manufacturer and the provider, so you'll be?
We can request a specific color they can provide.
And then there are also some personnel doors that are not the anodized aluminum storefront. They're just solid?
I know, like which building?
On Building 2, on the north elevation, there's one seven-foot door. It's just a standard door?
Yeah, it's a standard door and it will be colored, same color.
So it's also going to be evergreen? All green?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Salo. Um, I have some questions. I know there's not a landscape plan for this project. That's something that I am extremely concerned about for a number of reasons. The landscaping will help buffer sounds. As you know, this is a residential neighborhood, and even the zoning for what we're looking at, you have, we're looking at development standards for the R1 district. So with that, landscaping is important. And it's also important when we look at the project as a whole and looking at the perimeter of the existing Country Club, there, on the exterior side of the golf course, in some areas, it's extremely poor maintenance. I know that doesn't have anything to do with you, but it is a reflection on the owner, the, the Country Club. So when you're building something new, it's something we want to make sure that is elevated. And included with that is the type of materials you're looking for for the fencing and for the gate. In the landscape plan, it calls out a wrought iron gate, but when you read the proposal, the gate frame is only wrought iron and it has the chain link fence with, you know, the slats. That is a common material that's used along the edge of the Country Club, with the exception of Hermosa, where you have the golf course there. It's a wrought iron fence. So this is an area where if it was a residential project, we would not accept a chain link fence. And in addition to that, there are issues with the type of material you're proposing because existing on Country Club Drive, there is a chain link fence with this green slats that has graffiti on it. So it's prone to get vandalized. So you actually need that green wall to try to not only hide that it's a maintenance yard, but you also need to kind of elevate it because that's one of the, the highest property values in the city. And when you look at the perimeter of it, it, it can be, I drove around today and walked, you know, over the last few months along the property line, and it, it is, it can be better. I wouldn't want that for my neighbor to have weeds and other things. And I think that's something that the existing neighbors want to see taken care of and with anything new, have that improved. So I would like to see different materials for the fence if my other commissioners will, will go along with, with my recommendation and the material for the gate as well, not to be the chain link along with the landscape plan. Those are key things that I see that are lacking. And I also want clarification with Building 1. I'm not an architect, so I rely on my commissioners who are architects. But it does look that with the remodel, the building height is going to be reduced a bit?
It's the same.
It's the same height. So, and is it going to be set back at the same distance from the fence? That's not going to change at all?
No, no, no. It's an existing and we'll, we'll, we'll keep it as it is. Only going to be remodeled.
So that's even more reason to look at landscaping because that building is extremely close to that, that area. And there's not a sidewalk there, and it's just, some areas have the landscaping going up, the chain link fence, and others areas are blank, and you can definitely see through and see that, see the maintenance yard.
Okay, yeah, definitely we can, we can work with the landscape architect, the city landscape architect, so that we can improve the landscape around it to hide and mitigate the look of the yard and the buildings. And for this particular building, by the way, the entire lot of this area where the maintenance yard is, it's, I would say, a lot lower than the streets, so the, you're not going to see the, the building in a full height. So when we provide some landscape on the, on the front, on Hermosa, definitely that will help. So landscape, and this is a lot lower, so that will help a lot to mitigate the, the look, impact look of, of, of any, if any, yeah.
Because I know the gate is supposed to be eight feet tall, correct?
It's six.
Six feet. So, and the fence is also six feet?
I'm sorry?
The fence, the existing fence?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Six feet. So you definitely need to have that green material along that fence. And, you know, we can, we'll be discussing the type of material as well.
The, the new gate is a wrought iron gate, roll-up wrought iron gates, the new ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. It is now time for a public comment. Oh, sorry. Yes, yes, Ron?
Thank you, Vice Chair. One thing to know, from the location of the gate to the east and to the Rubio Wash, there is an existing very thick-planted hedge. So the, the one building that's to remain, the concrete block building, is effectively screened already by this very thick hedge. From the gate to the west, there also is a hedge, but it's much more thin of a hedge. So we've asked them to embellish that hedge to match the other hedge. So the intention here is that this whole facility is going to be effectively hidden. So the, the concrete block building is hidden by this very large screen. And if you can see through the gate when the gate's open, the other buildings are green buildings and they're meant to kind of go away. So that, that's the intention that they have that we've worked with them on.
And are you in agreement with having a chain link fence with the wrought iron frame?
I did propose other gates for them to consider, but they've selected, what they've selected.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we go to the general public?
Yeah, I have one comment. So for, for chain link fences, you know, they come in different kinds of finishes. You can get the standard galvanized, but you could also get it hot dipped in black or green. And, you know, it, it actually looks a lot nicer, so I don't know what the existing condition is now or how out of context it would look to?
It's a galvanized, basic one, galvanized.
So it's currently galvanized? So if we did like a hot dipped in black, would it look really out of place? Or, I mean, do you think it would look appropriate?
No, I mean, black or green, both of them is available in the market, so.
Right, right. But I'm just saying that if we applied that to specifically what you're proposing in the context of all the other existing chain link that we're not interrupting, is it going to look funny? Or is it going to look contextual?
No, that would be look fine because we will have some landscape anyways to that. The greenish of the landscape will, will, will work with the black if it's, if the design.
Yeah, so if you find that acceptable, I would, I, you know, I'd be agreeable to that. Thank you.
Okay. Comments from the general public?
No manager, no public comments.
Tim? Remers?
Yes. So I'm Tim Remers. I live at 400 East Hermosa, just south. I'm here to speak on this matter today. We are very supportive as neighbors of the Country Club and its desire to improve, improve the area. We think it's important that the Country Club as a neighbor in this Country Club community invest in and build out improvements to the, into, into the Country Club that benefit the neighborhood. We're excited that they're going to do so. We think it's great that they're going to provide space for their workers, a nicer space for their workers, and to attempt to beautify the, the existing area. I did want to raise just a couple of thoughts from neighbors. One is the, you know, there's a fair amount of traffic at the, at the Country Club. I don't know how this project is going to affect that. I do note that there are now two gates for the, for this area, and it doesn't, it seems to me that two gates just suggests more traffic, that more will be coming and going. They also, as was discussed, the existing gate, when opened, exposes the entire project to, to the view of the community. So the slats and the gates or the wrought iron or whatever it is doesn't really stop anybody from seeing the yard. The yard is open for most of the day. They start about 5:30 in the morning and, you know, they go until the evening. Although I think, I think they close up the yard earlier than, than when they close up the, the club. But one of the things that seems to be taken out of the project or of this area of the project is the parking. There's some of the parking for the workers that's in that area. And it, it's not clear where that's being relocated to, which means possibly it's being relocated to the south yard at the Country Club. And that's probably going to require more trips. The, the way that the club uses the Francisco, which is the north-south street that looks like the driveway of the club, is they have a yard to the south and a yard to the north. And they use the club carts to go back and forth between the different yards to maintain the club, which we're very grateful that they do. We think it's, we, we love the landscaping they do. We love the effort that they, that they put into that. But it probably means that there will be more people parked on the south and then commuting with the club carts up to the north. As the, as the commissioners suggested, it's, the, you can't look at the plans without, you know, seeing the chemicals on, on the, on the plans. And it's just not clear, you know, is this, is this an increase in chemical storage? Or is it decrease in chemical storage? It could be a very positive thing for the neighborhood if it means that they're transporting less chemicals back and forth and they're all stationary in one spot, but we just don't really know, you know, much, much about that issue. But we, we do like that, that they, that they're going to have something that's contained. But we'd, you know, we'd like to know a little bit more about those sorts of things. And, you know?
That's time.
I'm almost done. So the parking, the one thing that I, the, the other thing about the parking I want? So, the parking, the one thing that I, the other thing about the parking I want to just raise is, you know, if what this does is encourage people to park on the street, it's not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And I didn't see any conditions or approval or anything along those lines about where parking was gonna be done. So, you know, the last little piece, and it's just sort of nitpicky, is that there's nowhere else in the neighborhood that's using corrugated steel, or corrugated steel construction. If it's covered up and it's, and it can't be seen like the same, the country clubs at Annandale and La Canyada, and, you know, just about any other one that I could look up on Google Earth, you can't see their yards from the street. And to the extent that this is, that this works the same way, where you can't see it from the street, I think it could be a great thing for the neighborhood, but to the extent that it is visible from the street, I think it's not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, which we're all striving to do. You know, we have a historic house that's on the corner there, and we're trying to keep it historic and, you know, landscaped the way that the neighborhood should be landscaped and painted the way that the house should be painted and that sort of thing. So, I appreciate your time and your consideration, and I wanna make it clear that we're supportive of the country club doing these positive things, and would just love to learn more. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other cards or comments?
No, Madam Chair.
Sure, at this time, staff, do you have any additional comments?
No additional comments from staff.
Does the applicant have any additional comments? All right, we will then go to Commissioner, deliberation and discussion. Commissioner Tu.
Yes, I do resonate with what Chair Romo said, that it seems like we're missing the landscape plan from this submission, and would like to see, actually, the landscape has been designed and considered and presented in a way that would meet the standard of the commission. And also, I personally think that the corrugated metal pan, corrugated metal is a little bit out of the character, although it's like a utility building, it seems like it's pretty common use of the material, but looking at the surrounding, and it does seem like it's out of the character, and I was wondering if this applicant would have different options of the material, because we do have another building, the building one was covered by beige color stucco, and the contrast of these two colors is pretty substantial, so I think the color selection, we still need to pay more attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tu. Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up as far as the corrugated metal. Is there any chance that it can be made of a different material perhaps? Now, I wasn't aware that the gate remains open throughout the day, which kind of mitigates anything you can possibly do, if you can look in, and which is kind of, in my view, it would not be conducive to the beautification or whatever, but it's that way of the project. Now, I don't know how feasible it is for the gate to open and close as people commute back and forth, and so, I'm not sure where it would be that the speaker noted about the parking issue, where that would be relocated as far as in the plans, which would be a concern for all the neighbors if traffic, in fact, becomes increased. And also, I'd like to ask the city staff to perhaps look more into how the chemicals are being stored, and which chemicals, and things of that sort. If, for example, if they're, I understand, you know, the normal use, whether it be pesticides and things of that sort, but still, they, if they're not contained properly, they can still, you know, hamper the quality of air in the surrounding area, impacting, you know, property values and quality of life, even for people who have asthma or the elderly and things like that. Those are kind of my concerns, that I'd like to seek some more clarification on those type of issues, and also to further the chain link fence, if it's opening and closing. I'd like to see other material other than a chain link fence, even if it's black or green or whatever it is, so that you truly cannot see inside. I think that because the golf course is a part of the city and part of what San Gabriel is, I think they have, in my mind, the standard for them to beautify the city would be even higher, higher bar than a regular homeowner. That's my opinion.
Great, thank you so much. Vice Chair, Salah?
Yeah, I wanted to understand a little bit better the adjacency of the site and the proposed buildings to the public comments. So, I agree with the other commissioners regarding the landscape plan, but I wanted to understand where the adjacent property was, and can you help identify that on the site plan?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, at this time, the public comment can be reopened if the commission would like to hear from the applicant on the matter of parking, also on the matter of materials considered for the structures, also on the matter of parking and whether existing parking spaces are impacted with regards to the chemicals. Staff can recommend the addition of a condition to review those quantities with the fire department to see if there are any concerns with regards to that.
And I think I failed to close the meeting, the public comment. So, do you want me to close it and then reopen it?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So, I'm going to officially close the comment period, since I failed to do that. So, we're now closing the public comment period at 7:46, and then I am reopening the public comment period so we can hear from the applicant. It is now 7:47, so... And we wanna hear about the materials, landscape plan, and parking.
Yeah, landscape plans, we, as mentioned before, that can be provided and worked with the city landscape architect to review it. Parking, there is on the east side of the property, on the other side of the channel, there is like a triangular piece of property, can you see it? It's on the east side. This has belonged to the...
Should we say, or do you see the maintenance yard?
Yeah, to the east side, on the...
There's the north base, that triangular, down the dirt.
Yeah, exactly. This, yeah. That could be used as a parking for the staff, and you can go through the, on the sidewalk or some kind of access to the yard. This is for the people who works on the yard itself, on the maintenance yard, so that could be used as a parking for them. Okay?
And are you looking at an electronic gate, so the gate will be closed and then opened as vehicles or golf carts, maintenance carts go in and out, or would it be, what are the plans?
I was talking about this particular part, this particular area for the parking for the maintenance people who works there, but regarding to the golf course carts, the golf carts, I don't know, we have here the, Mr. Craig, presenting the golf course.
Right.
But I believe if we wanna make it with like a photo cell kind of opening, we can provide that, that's not a problem.
Because an electronic gate system is the only way to be able to keep that closed for the, to the public, and then open as a vehicle goes through. And if it's only maintenance vehicles and maintenance employees that are going to be utilizing that area, it's not the general public, so that can probably be worked out. I know at the San Gabriel Mission across the street, they have an electronic gate system that was put in place for the safety of the children, so it's not anyone going into the school campus, two school campuses during the time when the schools are in operation, and staff and the priest, they go through with the electronic gate.
Yeah, we can provide this kind of electronic gates. Regarding to the material of the buildings, the building can be covered with the stucco. A lot of steel structure building, it's very common that we put into consideration when we do the structure plans and all this kind of construction drawings. So, the structural engineer and the steel structure manufacturer can consider the stucco covering the building from outside, so will never be seen as a steel building. A lot of the churches, we have this kind of buildings.
But then, but the corrugated metal structures, would that something that has been voiced as a concern?
Yeah, this is the building I'm talking about, that will be covered from, by stucco from outside.
So, you're looking at possibly stuccoing the corrugated metal? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's, that's, that's...
That's an option.
Yeah, that's an option, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't think the steel structure will be very shone much from the street, because it's a lot lower than the street, but if this is, will be one of the conditions to make everybody's happy, the city and the neighbors, I believe my client, he can agree on this covering the building with the stucco from outside.
Did we cover everything?
Madam Chair, that would be up to the commission if enough clarification was provided.
Yes, Ron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Marlon, I wonder if you can show us the existing buildings that are gonna be torn down, just as a reference? So, they are corrugated metal buildings, so this is a very normal kind of building for this maintenance kind of facility, it's been here for decades. The new buildings that they're proposing are much cleaner looking, and they'll be painted, and again, the intention is to make them disappear. I'm just a little concerned, if you go to a stucco building and then you make it tan, then everybody sees it. So, from my point of view, I think the simple metal buildings painted green to make them go away is the better option. And then, another consideration is the adjacent triangular parking lot, lot was never part of the proposal, so if it were to become a parking lot, I'm just wondering about screening along the street edges of that facility too.
So, we would need that landscape plan, and I think when I look at my colleagues here on the dais, you know, if that's something that we want the applicant to return with that information, and a little bit more complete information regarding the parking, regarding landscaping, regarding, you know, the renderings, we usually get colored renderings, these renderings are not in color, but, so, I'm going to kind of go around here, but do I need to close the public comment? Okay, so, it is now, I'm going to close the public hearing, it is 7:54. The public hearing is now closed, and we will have deliberation amongst the commissioners. So, the question is, do we need to have more information, or are we ready to vote on this matter tonight? So, Commissioner Tu?
I do think we need more information. As far as I know, that if the new buildings proposed, the parking needs to be resolved, right? And then, we don't see any parking information on this site plan, as far as also like landscaping we talked about. I do think we need more information, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
I agree, I think we need more information. I understand, with all due respect to our architect, I understand about these buildings, but when you're proposing new construction and new buildings, that's why inherently there's commission to make sure that it's brought up to the perceived standard that we currently have as opposed to, you know, forty years ago, where, you know, you put up a shed and everything was fine and dandy. So, I do think we need more time, I think we want, I would like some clarification as to far, how the gate's gonna work, and how many maintenance vehicles are going in and out of there to kind of mitigate a little bit the view of, from the, especially the neighbors that have a direct view to it, how the impact, obviously, it may end up being a little more impactful than before, but we can try to mitigate that as much as we can with the parking issue as well, and the chain link fence, I truly think that the country club can probably do a lot better than just that. And also with the, to identify the trees and the cactuses, I'd like to see something along those lines, proposed names or something, or how they're gonna identify all these trees and plants, and I guess that'll also give the city staff some time in the interim to seek guidance from the fire department, and they can contact them, and then perhaps they can provide that information also to some of the neighbors, so that it eases their concern as far as the storage and how they're gonna mitigate any aerosols, you know, being kept there or anything like that, so just for them to have this guidance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, Salah?
Yeah, so, I don't have any issues with the buildings that are being proposed the way it is. I actually agree with the city architect that these buildings are intended to be understated and as invisible as possible, so I, so the fact that they're painted evergreen, or if we're proposing that the chain link be hot dipped in black galvanized rubber, I mean, those things will kind of like fade into the background of visibility. What I think is incomplete about the proposal is how the landscape on the perimeter hides these buildings and how it fits with the context of the neighborhood. That's the part that I don't quite fully understand, so that's what I'd be looking for, but I don't have an issue with the proposal of the buildings themselves. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Does staff have any comments? It looks like right now, we don't have the votes to move forward on this, so if we're going to continue the public hearing on this item, then we have the option of a date certain or to a date to be determined, is that correct, Sam? Okay, so, with that, I'd like to, we do still need a vote, or no?
Yes, Madam Chair, the motion would be to continue the item, and this is if the applicant agrees to it, and it would be to provide more information relative to the landscaping, relative to the gate, and potentially providing a perspective to show that the buildings, the material, the finish, the setback, the landscaping screening is adequate. the setback, the landscaping screening is adequate as proposed so that the, the buildings are, are not visible or any visibility is either reduced or if it is increased, then a perspective to be provided to confirm either way. Also, in the meantime, staff can evaluate the parking. One thing that staff did want to point out would be that the buildings, the uses are identified on the floor plan. The majority of the buildings are primarily used for the landscaping vehicles. So essentially they're garages and the intent is not to increase space for, for staff use. But that can be a part of staff's review again to make sure that there will not be an increase in the parking demand. But that is not staff's understanding from, from staff's review of the application and also of the plans. It does not show that, uh, parking will be removed. In fact, it, it was mentioned and it's also shown on the sheet that the elevation between that area where the buildings are proposed are lower than the street elevation as well as the elevation where parking is provided. But that is something that staff can also confirm. But just so that the applicant is clear, again, the items that have to be brought back would just to be confirmed that the buildings are adequately screened and that adequate landscaping will be provided as part of the project. And also evaluation of, of the gate and the material.
Okay, so with that, if I can get a motion to continue this item, if the applicant. So the applicant is, is willing to continue this item, so if they're probably to a date uncertain. So this gives you time to get all the information together, bring it to staff. To a date uncertain, so it's going, the date of the new public hearing will be sometime in the future once you're, you can get those items together, have staff review it and then present something to the commission. Okay? So with that, is there a motion to continue this? The second? Roll call, please.
Chair Romo?
Yes?
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Commissioner Two? Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
So this item will be continued to a meeting in the future, date to be determined. We, we now go to item C. So we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll be back at eight oh five. Thank you. All right, we're back after our five-minute break. And we are going to now be discussing item C, 1649 Euclid Avenue Planning Case Number SPR21-134, Site Plan Review, Applicant Vivi Wang, Presentation by Anthony.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So the last item before you tonight is for a site plan review to propose a second-story addition to an existing single-family residence. This one located at sixteen forty-nine Euclid Avenue with the planning case number SPR21-134. The project is located on the west side of Euclid Avenue between, between the streets of Valley Boulevard to the north and Dewey Avenue to the south. The eight thousand two hundred and thirteen square foot lot is currently developed with a one thousand three hundred and ninety-six square foot, one-story, single-family residence and a detached garage. The property is bordered by four single-family residences, all also within the R1 zone to the north, south, east and west across the street of Euclid Avenue. This is an image of the existing single-family home. The architect or the design team is looking to, um, basically incorporate a design that still follows that same design, uh, and that'll be showed in a later slide. The property is zoned R1 for single-family residential and has a general land use designation of low-density residential. The above image is of the proposed site plan. The proposed project would be for the addition of the second floor. Staff did want to kind of point out that the area in the back that is surrounding the pool is currently covered concrete. One of the conditions of approval and during staff's review of the project required that that be removed and replaced with something that is permeable or a permeable paver, permeable, permeable pavestone. That way, in order to make the project comply with the lot coverage requirement of the thirty-five percent for the entire lot. The existing concrete that is shown between the pool area and the house is calculated towards the lot coverage, so it would be remaining. This slide shows the street perspective of the proposed project. As can be seen from the street perspective, the second-story addition is pushed back from the front elevation. This is to minimize any kind of massing effect that the proposed second-story project would have on the street level while also having setbacks on the two sides to mitigate any privacy concerns from the neighbor. This slide shows that the proposed project complies with the development standards in the R1 zone in terms of lot coverage, floor area ratio, height, setbacks and parking spaces. As is required for a second-story addition, an analysis was required, which was provided as part of your package tonight. The analysis must show how many two-story residences are located within a three-hundred-foot radius of the subject site. This analysis showed that there are currently six two-story residences within that radius. As mentioned earlier, the proposed project is a low-density residential and found to be in compliance with the, um, two thousand and four general plan according to the three following goals, which is housing goal A, community design goal ten point one, as well as to community design goal ten point three. This project was found to be exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, per guideline section one five three zero three, class three, for new construction or conversion of small structures. And for the proposed project tonight, noticing was required. A notice was posted at the project site as well as in the late, or last Thursday's issue, I'm sorry, two Thursday's issues of the San Gabriel Sun. There was actually notices that were sent out, um, more than three-hundred-foot radius. The applicant provided notifications for five-hundred-foot radius. So notices were sent out to property owners and occupants within the five-hundred-foot radius of the subject site as well as having tonight's agenda posted at the city hall, post office, library and on the city's website. And it is with that that staff recommends that the design review commission of the city of San Gabriel, California, approve planning case number SPR21-134 for a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence located at sixteen forty-nine Euclid Avenue, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. Staffs available for any questions. The applicant, Vivi, is unfortunately not here tonight, but there is a representative from her team that could assist with any questions that the commission might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthony. At this time, I'd like to look at my commissioners to see if there's any clarifying questions that they need from staff. Commissioner Two?
Yes, I do have a question. So, uh, does the, the building setback, uh, complying with the setback requirement?
Yes, it does comply. Let me get the plans really quick.
This is a bit confused, um, looking at the, the elevation. It has the front elevation, the east elevation that, uh, shows like five-foot setback on the side yard, but it doesn't meet the forty-five degree angle.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Two. So actually on, um, if staff can refer the commission to sheet A dash one point one. So the code requires that for second-story additions or new second stories, that the applicant provide either the forty, compliance with the forty-five degree angle, which is measuring, um, from the property line, measuring up ten feet and drawing a forty-five degree angle plane and the house cannot intersect in that. That is one option. The second option was, would be to provide at least ten-foot setbacks for the second story on each side. So referring to sheet A dash one point one, it shows that the second story is actually on the north side is at twelve feet, one inch and for the south side at twelve feet, seven inches, which would comply.
Okay, thank you. I, I think it just like, um, the applicant should make it more, uh, specific on the prints to mark up like all the setbacks and the compliance to the code because I mean, it, it does seem a bit confusing, uh, looking at the elevation alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
No, I agree. It, it's, it's a little confusing. You mentioned twelve feet, one inch. The setback to, to the second story?
Correct, on the northern, um, along the northern property line.
As far as feet, um, how much does it in, or how higher does it encroach on that forty-five degree angle?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
If you take that forty-five degree angle, um, it's not, it's not to intersect, correct? Or you say at least a ten-foot setback. My question is, is how much higher is that intersection? Where the point where the, the dwelling intersects that forty-five degree angle, how much higher is it?
Let me see, I, I don't believe that is, uh, dimensioned on the elevation. Let me check.
That would be important. I, you know, um, you can have twenty-foot ceilings or, you know, ceilings or something along those lines where it does have the setback for ten feet. However, it could be the height of a, of a three-story building.
Oh, okay, I, I see what you're saying. Well, the proposed project would still have to comply with the height requirement and as well as, uh... Yeah, the proposed project would have to comply with the height requirement. There is sections on page A dash six, um, but I, I know that they're not labeling the dimensions on here. So I, I know on the floor plan, the applicant has labeled that the ceiling heights are in fact nine feet. Just confirm that. Yeah, so if staff can also refer to sheet A dash three, it shows that the ceiling height for the second floor is at nine feet. So, nine feet. Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what the, uh, that height would be that does encroach into that forty-five degree angle. If the commission would like, we could add a condition of approval that has them include that dimension?
That would be interesting for it because that would determine obviously the height of that.
it does have the little 45-degree superfinally dashed in. And as I understand it, the roof structure can be beyond that 45-degree angle, right? It's just the room has to be within the 45-degree angle.
Correct. So, the code says you could have an encroachment of up to, I think it's 24 inches for any eaves, an extension. Okay. Yeah, and we could definitely have them illustrate or dimension how much of that does encroach into that 45-degree angle.
Because it's a gabled roof, it does have some attic piece width outside of the 45-degree. It's not just eaves.
Right. That's correct.
Any other questions?
That is all, thank you.
All right. Vice Chair Salo?
Nothing new, just, you know, having reviewed so many projects like this, it does appear to me that the building height is adequate. Yes, just the drawings are a little hard to read. We shouldn't have to figure it out here on the dais like this, but it does appear to comply. No further comments. Thank you.
My only comment is, I'm aware that the scope of this project does not require a landscape plan. There is landscaping shown on the plans on A1. Is that existing landscaping, or is that new landscaping?
That would be existing landscaping. Are you referring to the front yard or the...
Front yard and side yard, yeah. That's all included on that A1, and that's just all existing.
Correct. Let me just go back to the, so this just shows the front yard, the landscaping, and then I think on here, I can't zoom in, but there, in between the pool and the existing house, you can see the small portion of landscaping with those trees.
Right.
That is existing.
That's all existing.
Correct.
That's my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, it's for the applicant. You can come to address the commission regarding the project.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, commission members. My name is Vince Ying. I'm Vivi Wang's coworker. Previously working for the architecture designing, but right now, my major duty is for the construction management. So, for this project, you know, this is what I know just based from the plan, but Vivi did ask one time me, asked me for help to design the roof at the back, how to connect the existing roof to be, because we have a second floor on the top of the back of the first floor. So, I did give her some suggestion about it. So, yeah, so unfortunately, she's not, she's, she cannot come today, so I'm just here. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to ask, to answer from my experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Two, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Representative.
I have a question about elevation.
Okay.
So, this, on the drawing, she's A-5.
Yes.
The side elevation south, and then there's a 35-degree angle indicated. What is that for?
I think that is also the, I believe, also the like second-floor encroachment, because I believe they have a 35-degree from the rail property line, but as you can see on the site plan, we have like a really big backyard setback. I think it's 75 feet something, so I believe Vivi just draw this angle and show you can, you can see a hidden line at the top, very top of the 35-degree. So, so with this long length, long property, so obviously, all the buildings falling below this 35-degree. I just, I think she just add this, but we are totally okay with this requirement.
Okay, thank you. Just a general comments about this set of drawings. I think, I don't know if the city required to provide the building section, but obviously, it's missing on this set. And a lot of the standard of doing this drawing is a bit of like, how to put it, it just like, it's not really matched with all the, like, other submittals we have seen in this commission, including like really basic way of presenting building height, floor-to-floor height, all this basic information. It wasn't completed, and it is a bit confusing the way the existing foreplan is drawn and also the proposed foreplan typically would have a demolition, demo plan that indicate what exactly is the scope of work, but in this set of drawing, it appears that it is a bit confusing, it's hard to read. So, this is my general comments about the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I, one of our commissioners kind of walked me through the plan, but it's still very confusing to me. So, it seemed to me that there was about a four-and-a-half, five-foot exit beyond the 45-degree. How much of a concern is that? I don't know. Were there any neighbor inputs or neighbors being concerned about that? It could be fairly simple as a view to the mountain or something that now is being obstructed because it's too high. So, that is just my concern. It's not clear to me.
Vice Chair Salo?
I concur with the other commissioners. The drawings need a lot of work, and the better the quality of the drawings at this stage, you're gonna benefit much later on in construction when you'll get better bids and better quality work later on when it matters. So, the drawings do need some work, but the project does appear to comply with city standards, in my opinion. Thank you.
I'd like to speak. Ron, do you have any other...
Well, I agree with Commissioner Two. This has been a very difficult project in that the drawings, we reviewed four times. There's always been numerous drafting errors and just like not really understanding how an elevation works and so on. It's substantially better than it was, but it's, I still see drafting errors on it. So, yeah, the poor quality of drawings.
I know this is a modest remodel with the second story, but I think it's to be able to read and understand the drawings at this level when it comes to the commission, it's imperative that we get good information. You've been sitting here hearing to the two other submittals, and I think the first submittal, they actually did a good job. They had a color rendering, they had information on the neighboring properties, the site plan and everything was a little more clearer, so I would look at that more as an example as to what we're looking for. So, I'd like to see if there's any comments from the public on this item.
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
All right. So, with no comments, I'd like to close the public hearing, and it is now 8:30. So, the time for public comment on this item is now closed. City staff, do you have any additional comments, Sam or Anthony?
No, not at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Do you have any additional comments?
I don't have anything further to comment. Thank you.
So, hearing no additional comments from staff or the applicants, it's for the commission to deliberate, which I'd like to propose that we look at either continuing this item. So, we have a more complete application, because there doesn't seem to be enough information for us to vote at this time. With that being said, is there a commissioner who would like to continue this item to a date uncertain?
I would like to continue it.
Second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Chair Romo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Salo?
Yes.
Commissioner Two?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. We now go to item number four, comments from the planning manager.
Yes, Madam Chair, no comments this evening.
And we've now moved to item number five, commissioner comments on information on conferences and meetings and reports. Commissioner Two?
No, I don't have any. Thanks.
Commissioner Lopez?
None, thank you.
Vice Chair Salo?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. The only quick report that I have is that our most historic structure in the city, the San Gabriel Mission, is actually open for services and for general view, public view on Sundays. It's not completed. They're still doing work on the altar, but it's nice having our building back and open. So, if you haven't seen it, there is, it's extensively different than what it looked like before, and they went back to the architectural drawings from the 1930s, WPRA drawings that they had intricate drawings on the building, on the mission itself. So, they're using those. They're still raising money because the insurance money did not cover smoke and water damage, only fire damage. So, they're still raising some money, but the restoration's moving forward, and I heard there's going to be a wedding in June, so some of the scaffolding at the altar is going to be, most of it is supposed to be gone, if not all of it will be gone. So, I think when we look at our historic structures, San Gabriel Mission, Church of Our Savior, the country club, and the trees in the country club and the cactus, our mission playhouse, anything that is over 100 years old, I mean, these are true treasures in our community, and we need to celebrate them. Thank you. With that, I will adjourn the meeting to our next regular meeting of the design permission on Monday, May 22, 2023, at 6:30 PM at City Hall.